All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'll call the meeting order as you go with the play. But the ladies stood in line in the United States of America. To Republicans with their hands on their hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. President, family fathers, thank you for today. Thank you for this time together and just help us do the people's business and be due justice with the money that's given us. Jesus my prayer, amen. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for coming in. It will be such a pleasure to meet you. I know we've spent a long time considering how to get through all this. Mindy, you want to start us off and kind of describe the books for us and then we'll go from there?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick heads up on what we have here. The first, in front of the first brown page, we just have the cover page, definition of how the funds and revenue sources are, and then the third page there talks about the, you hear us talk about the 1,000 series, 2,000, 3,000, and so forth. It describes what's in all of those. It's pretty self-explanatory. Personal services, anything, salary, benefits, that kind of thing, supplies, services, capital outlays. And then the second brown page, we have just some comparison sheets. I'm still working on more of these, but this is some stuff that Steve and Tom and I talked about, wanting to look at the major funds and the levied funds by, by the series, so by those four series, the services, supplies, services, capital outlays. And this goes through, again, the levied and major funds and the totals for each of those. I have MVH restricted and unrestricted, separated, and then a total for those. That's the reason it's highlighted. Behind that is the data for the county general, and that's an overview by department for everybody that sits in county general. And it also has Peter Franklin Plan in there, the last one, and his numbers, and then a comparison, the over and under from Peter's plan for each of those. And then behind that, we're going to have the same thing for the, again, levied and major funds. So you will see another, or I guess I have a chart in here before we get to that, just a quick way to see those, the overall, and then, again, the different funds, just in a little bar chart. So, and then behind that, again, is the same thing, but with the major and levied funds, again, again, in comparison to Peter Franklin Plan, and then another little bar chart to kind of show you where we sit there, okay? So those are the comparisons that we have going on right now. And then behind the two brown sheets, you will see everything you've seen before. Obviously, Mike, you've not seen this before, but I think you've looked at, looked at a sample one, but the tabs are in order by alphabet, to a degree. I mean, we have sheriff and jail together, that kind of stuff, but we weren't quite sure what to call extension, so we put it under Purdue because we thought that would make Joyce happy. We put it under Purdue, Purdue extension, so, so it'll be in the P's. But anyway, behind each of these tabs are their individual budgets, and it's, you can see then the comparison to 2025. And the difference between adopted and total, most of the time, those are the same. If it's different, it's because there has been an adjustment or an additional appropriation made since the original adopted budget. So I wanted to keep both of those in there because you could see where they started the year and where it is currently, so.
Thanks, Mindy. So when you finish up on the comparisons, will you have totals for each department on, like their total budget from 2025 versus 2026?
You have that.
I do. Well, as a total?
For a depart, for each department?
Yeah, at the end.
At the, I can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
I have, I have it by series, but not by 2025. You're correct, okay.
Thanks.
Yep, gotcha. Oh, I'm sorry. Mindy Byers, county auditor. A little late. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, well, let's get started. Looks like Health Department is up first.
Adrian Northcott, I am the administrator for the Montgomery County Health Department. In the Health Department, the, the crew, the sections, we do subject vector control, birth, death, genealogy, parent accedatives. We also have a state certified water lab that tests water for E. coli and for more bacteria. Our nurse does immunizations. She also does clinical disease investigations, blood testing. We do clinics, we go to the schools, do clinics, we stay open one night a month, and we also are open one Saturday a month for immunization. We also have a health educator who goes into the schools, does education, helps with events. She does unfit home education, Narcan training, CPR, stop the bleed instructor, and we also are a pit station for Montgomery County. And then we have our case manager who goes to our unfit homes and is also oversees our preparedness case. So with that, for my 2026 highlights for our budget, our health fund budget, I did change employees to the, from the HFI to the health fund due to the HFI has been decreased quite a bit. Last year, we got $827,000. This year, or for 2026, we are getting 221. So our immunization grant for all counties was also rescinded. Our preparedness grant was decreased from $25,000 to 20%. With that being said, we are going to be ending our agreement with the drug-free Montgomery County Coordinator. We hope support them. And we are discontinuing our support to public integrated health for community paramedic due to the HFI cuts. Our plans to hire a second health nurse have been suspended, and we have had to scale back for 2026 on our tobacco cessation program. Our tobacco cessation program was going to be for anybody and everybody in Montgomery County, but with the HFI, they want us focusing on students, and they want us focusing on moms and others who smell while pregnant. And we are also very fearful that our BFC program and our 317, which is state funded vaccines, are also going to be cut. They have not been yet, and our private immunization programs are highly at risk also.
Excuse me, Adrian.
Yes.
Did you summarize what you just said, any word in the budget book?
I emailed one of these sheets to Jennifer and Mindy. I can make copies for you if you would like to copy, but I.
That would pass from email.
Yeah, or I can email it to the council. That's what I'm going to do, but yeah. Community partner support, we are also, we are going to continue our partner support with the Montgomery County Brief Clinic, supporting maternal and infant, or maternal health and immunization clinics that we have there. We are going to be still involved with our schools on tobacco prevention, cessation, and education materials. And our youth summit, which is the middle school and high schools, Wall Bash College, Youth Service Bureau, we, that focuses on the high school, it's really on mental awareness and what we can do or what programs, we let the kids make the decisions. So Wall Bash has topics in regards to mental health, and then we let students come up with ideas on their own. Each school picks so many students, and they talk about what they can do differently or what programs it could be fit in place. And then we are going to continue our hardship fund for TB cases that are in isolation due to being an active case, or patients needing immediate care, and we also are going to continue our bike entry for the community.
Joyce, do you partner with volunteers for mental health to do the schools and the mental health piece you were talking about, like Wall Bash and those pieces that you let the students do? Because I know that they do some of those services, or they're having some of those workshops.
So we, we support them, but we don't, we support them, but the statement is, we don't get super involved into the mental health piece. For one, we don't have anybody in the Health Department who is trained on the mental health aspect, but we have our wellness coalition who focuses on mental health. And our drug-free Montgomery County Coalition also focuses on mental health, and we are there at those meetings and support them, and I'm on the leadership committee for both of them, so coming up with different ways to support our mental health needs that are in Montgomery County, because we realize that's where majority of their problems lie, is in regards to mental health, so, yes.
So we're not duplicating some of those?
No, we are not duplicating any services.
Okay.
Is the COVID testing, is that all federally funded? Is that all grant funded?
So COVID testing, not anymore. We still have COVID tests that we can pass out to the community, but we are not doing, we're not going out and giving COVID tests anymore, so.
So the 60,000 funding is, is this federal, is that not, so it's not grant funded?
That is actually for, we can use that funding for immunizations now.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's what that's for, because they've increased our prices on all the immunizations, they're raising their prices on the private funding piece of it. And if there is somebody elderly who needs COVID testing because they don't know how to do it.
Right. But, yeah, so it's, it's aligning two things.
Also, due to the budget, because, because our budget has been decreased by 73%, depending on what happens here today, I will eventually have to let go of another employee, so.
Well, today we're not taking any votes?
I know, I know. I'm just making everybody aware, so, yeah.
Do you have questions, Mr. Ray?
So when you say the budget's reduced by 73%, which reason do you want?
I'm looking at our HFI. So our HFI was $827,000 for this year, and it's been cut by 221,000, plus our preparedness grant was cut by 5,000, and so we've had those cuts, so, yeah.
Bill?
Thank you.
Sherry, your question.
Sherry, the elder director of Montgomery County Central Communications Center. What do we do? We provide emergency dispatch services to the city and the county, and that includes town marshals and all the volunteer agencies as well, emergency and non-emergency. We are also the only employees in the county that are IAX NCI certified, so we handle all the warrants on the same people, stolen trucks, guns, all of the above, which a lot of people don't realize that we do that as well. They're issued to the court and then they come to us, as far as rewards. We are all, are we certified by the state in emergency medical dispatch, law enforcement dispatch, and fire as well. We also are certified in three different NIMs classes. Those certifications, the EMD fire law are, every two years, we recertify, as well as IAX NCI. Can't really think of anything else that makes sure everybody knows what nine hundred and one does, so, I believe it has. This proposed 2026 budget, I apologize to, I'm very hoarse, is, last year's was 1.917567. We have to do an additional appropriation for this year for our location automated dispatch system that we're currently working on, and an additional for 15,000 in overtime. That took us to 2.118252. My requested 26 budget is 2,038,544. Majority of that is salaries. Salaries came in a little over $1,038,385, and a big balance of the remaining is benefits as well. We have potentially no big projects next year. There's one that we would like to do, and that's currently being looked at, but it's not something that is a has-to, so it'll all depend on how the big picture looks.
I think I got it wrong. I missed this morning's meeting, but we've talked, the cities discussed possibly reimbursing back some of the location costs for the local fire unit, you know, understanding that?
I do not.
Okay.
When that project first started.
There was some discussion.
Yes, when the project first started, they were going to pay through the whole thing because our local fire department is the one requesting initially that we do this, and then it was decided we had a good balance, cash balance, over the years we built up, and that we would take care of that expense, at least the dispatch side of it.
Right.
The fire department will take care of their side of it.
Okay.
I do know the governing board, and like you said, you were able to attend this morning, numerous times, they've stated that, especially with the way the lit money's looking after next year, 27-2, I believe, everyone's aware they have to come to the table.
Yeah, okay. Who's voice staff or is that one?
That one.
Brad Cane. I'm curious about the line item, the 74% above, it says.
Are you in the 1235?
The 11307, yeah, yeah. The supervisor is 74%. Is that a number or what?
11307?
Yes.
Well, the report I read today says 27.77% left in that line.
This is a different percentage for 26 from 25.
So you're looking at the 26?
Yeah.
Sorry.
The rest of them are around 3%. It's 74%.
It's probably someone who started mid-year or moved to that line mid-year and only, the budget's only reading half of what they're.
That's right. We had like 10 or 11 filled positions at the beginning of the year, and we're up to 15 now, so the auditor's obviously going to attest that we've been moving people around. We currently have 11 people with less than three years' experience, so, that's, yeah. Thank you.
So, Steve Lloyd, so, did you ask just, the scratchers, because we're probably not really asked, because it was zero to 25?
So there, there are three of those, if you will, and they've been moved from the 1222 into the 1235 fund, because the 1222 is the state fund, and to be honest with you, we receive a little over 400,000 a year, and so I discussed this with Jen, I don't know, a month or so ago, if I didn't move them now, I was going to have to move them midstream next year, which would cause all of us, maybe our office and her office, a lot of heartache. So we just decided we'd move them for the 26 budget. The 1222 fund reflects that those people, those positions, if you will, have been moved to the 1235 fund.
Where else I get?
Where do you find?
Okay, was the 1222?
Yes, it's the smaller fund, the first page.
Yeah, if you look at the top left in the green, it'll say 1222 statewide 911. And then, if, if it's, if there's no request in the budget, then it's not showing, but we did move three positions and the benefits that went with it.
So it would have showed a balance there last year, and if it's zero this year, you?
We did get rid of it.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, is what the offset was.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, thanks.
Is that fund still decreasing? We just talked about that.
The smaller fund, the 1222 state fund? It has not decreased.
Is it the other one that's?
The PSAP lit went up this year. This is only our second year in, with the PSAP lit, but it did go up from the very first year.
If that's levelled off, your fund's from the state?
The 1222, yes. And that probably will not get bigger. I went to a conference and spoke with that actual director of statewide 911, and they don't see an increase. Now, we, hopefully, every fall, we get a surplus.
It's been as large as 141,000 and as low as, I think last year was a low of 67, I believe. I reached out last week and they couldn't commit. Someone else that was kind, very close to that who does some consulting workforce, knows we're going to get something, but they're just now beginning their audit, and so they can't really say anything till October, he said. But we typically do get something.
I'm not sure how your budgets run, but at the end of the year, what?
You'll have money in those accounts, maybe that will not be used, that it will go back into their, their generals to be used, utilized again or not?
We'll have balances at the end of 25, yes. Are, I assume you mean reductions?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, we, and we talked.
I mean, I'm just wondering if it would be substantial amount or not, or whatever.
No, we should begin 26 with money, yes, but.
What she's doing right now is she's moving money from one, and she's doing transfers all the time, chasing the overtime and other short calls in other lines. So we're trying to get by unit without additional.
Additionals, okay.
So we're playing the, yeah.
Yeah, so there would not be anything much to be encumbered on anything, or anything to go back, so, okay.
No.
Okay, I just wonder, I was.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We talked about this at governing board this morning, and Jennifer had 13 transfers waiting on her just from me when she got back Monday, so.
And I know, I know Jake waits on an extra, sometimes they get an extra check too, and it's always nice to have that amount.
And we did get an extra one from PSAP Lit, I want to say May or June, and that was a nice surprise because I called over and I said, what's this $144,000? And they're like, it's the surplus. So that was, that was great.
So you're in your regular?
Yes, yes.
That's good.
Mike Warren.
Good, Mike.
So to clarify, the 1.3 plus for the salaries piece of the proposed budget, is that for full staffing or up to what you currently have? Without the one that you, you're still.
Does it include 15?
Does it include all?
There's 16 positions, and then myself and the assistant director, so there's 18 in the department. But dispatcher-wise, we're just down one.
Right, that, the salary piece.
That salary is budgeted into 26.
And for, for full staff?
Yes, yes.
But in past years, we've kind of pirated out of that to pay overtime and that stuff.
Well, unfortunately, yes, since COVID, actually, 2020 is what really.
Right.
Got us, and I think that really helped us have a larger cash balance. Didn't really help otherwise, but, yeah. Overtime's killed us this year, it really has, and a lot of that has to do with only having four that have five years or more on. I, I just honestly feel that paying a veteran some overtime is far cheaper than a lawsuit. And that's, that's the honest truth. I, I can't have two brand-new people in there alone.
Sure.
It's fine.
Any other questions for Sherry?
Steve Lloyd, not for Sherry, but, Mindy, so if we're comparing 25 to 26, and they spent money in 1222 and not planning in 26, if you eliminate that, we do comparisons 25 to 26, what's going to happen is it's going to show her a huge one-line item, and so we just need to think about that, I think.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like mapping is next.
How big is Mappy Directive? Some of the responsibilities that we have, as far as the Mappy Department goes, we're responsible for all the information that we have on our house GIS mapping software. We also take care of all the city's various services, dispatching, road center, line addressing, things like that. We also take care of the online map beacon, everybody uses on public, so there's interest in something on there, a little one's slipped down there, we'll need to add that to our ones. We do partial transfers, blits and combines, annexations, driveways, easements, little alley gates, and some provisions to name the few. As far as the budget, the budget hasn't changed from last year, still the same. The budget itself is all revenue generated. We get $20,000 from the city, we do their services one, and then the other 2,000 is for prying, things like that, digital services that we charge for. If you have any questions, just hit me up.
That's good.
The new plat book looks good, too. We're proud of that, we like that.
You didn't have any additional appropriation to this year, did you?
No.
All right.
Just real quick with mine, I know, you know, after we had our discussion the other day, I did have a discussion with Dan about that.
I don't know if you had talked to him or not. Mike has a good idea on, on.
Some of the responsibilities that we have as far as the mapping department goes, we're responsible for all the information that we have on our house GIS mapping software. We also take care of all the city's various services, dispatching, event, road center, line addressing, things like that. We also take care of the online map beacon that everybody uses on public, so there's interest in something on there. We'll do one sort of down there. We do partial transfers, splits and combines, annexations, driveways, easements, little alley vacates and some provisions to name the few. As far as the budget, the budget hasn't changed from last year. Still the same. The budget itself is all revenue generated. We get twenty thousand dollars from the city. We do their services one. And then the other two thousand is for prying, things like that, digital services that we charge for. Have any questions?
Looks good.
The new plat book looks good too.
We're proud of that. We like that.
You didn't have any additional preparation for this year, did you?
Just real quick with mine, I know after we had our discussion the other day, I did have a discussion with Dan about that.
I don't know if you had talked to him or not. Mike has a good idea on being able to maybe run on funds that they have using the interest, kind of like what Sixberry proposed the other day. And I, I did, if you want to get with him, get with Tom and C because we want to make sure that if we do that, it goes back into that fund. But I think that's a great idea to, because he's got several dollars that's available that might eventually be able to run his or help run his office and take less money. So thanks, Mike. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mike. Veterans Office. It's pretty stable too.
I'm Joe Ellis, the county veteran service officer. And some of the things that we do, we prepare property tax deductions. A service-connected disability at ten percent or more gives a deduction of taxes. We also have military family relief fund. That's a fund that has twenty-five hundred dollars in it that we can give out to people in need. And employment assistance, motor vehicle license plates. This is for service-connected individuals with fifty percent or more and the deduction, or not deduction, but the. It's just license plates for the veterans. We have the veterans home, veterans memorial cemetery, women veterans, and tuition fee for children of disabled veterans and Purple Heart recipients. And that's a deduction or free schooling for the kids. Disability compensation. That's probably my largest job that I have is that when veterans come in and they have disabilities, I type up and send it to them. They're sending it to the VA. Then we have veterans pension programs, free low-cost medical care through the VA hospitals and medical facilities, job training, burial and memorials, Honor Flight out of Lafayette. I don't do that any longer, however, I spent eighteen years or eighteen, those eighteen years as a board member. And then we dissolved our section and then someone else picked it up and so we still support them. And then Vet Court, that's the court that if an individual is a VA veteran and he's caused some problems or has issues, then we deal with that in the court system. And then the Indiana Legal Services is for low-income folks that need help with legal issues. Now, on the budget, I have not done anything. There's no changes in the budget. Except that I do not have a secretary any longer. And this last year, I did six hundred claims. And unfortunately, we do a CDX report, which breaks out all of the monies that are spent by the VA. And it was done in nineteen, or twenty-twenty-three. And the amount was that we get here in the county was ten million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that was brought in. And I have to admit, I have one guy this year that he called me and he said, Joe, I got a check. I said, okay, how much was it? He said it was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. That's one individual. And the best thing about this, he didn't have a pocket. He needed, he needed. And so we worked with him to get him all set up. We have twenty-one hundred and sixty-three veterans in the county. And something that I did. Here is a park bench that we give. And what I did. I've got eleven benches, two for Dalton, one for New Ross, two for Wayland, two for Wayntown, three for Crawfordsville, and one for Newmarket. And then I have six others that I'm attempting to get, and that's for Alamo, Linden, New Richmond, Woodgate and Ladoga. And so the park benches are obviously for suicide prevention and they cost seventy-five dollars each. And so I paid for them. I mean, I just did. And that's what we do. Any questions?
Do you need a secretary?
Well, I could use one, yes. But I'm thinking that with, oh. Tom, Tom is going to get another person to fill a position in his section and maybe we might be able to coexist and use her as part of mine, so.
Hey Gary, it requires a few.
Anything else?
So I wish to know that the Legionnaire and the V L W appreciate all your work that you do. I don't give up the dollars as much, but I've seen the benches and I've heard comments about what you do and the services and you're very much appreciated. That's one.
I appreciate. Anything else? All right, thanks, Joe.
Good evening. Jessica Burgett, Director of Emergency Emergency Management. Some things that we do, we coordinate planning, preparedness, responsive recovery efforts throughout the county. We develop emergency operations plans. We conduct hazard mitigation exercises. We do organization trainings. We maintain resources and a sixty thousand per foot building as well. We take care of response capabilities throughout the county. We work really closely with law, fire, EMS, dispatch, volunteer organizations, National Weather Service, lots of state partners and federal partners. With support of my almost seventy-trained volunteers, we do community events throughout the county. We support search and rescue efforts, traffic control, damage assessments, storm spotter stuff. Anytime there's any weather, we have volunteers in every area of the county looking at those storms. That is a majority of what we do. Planning is a large part of what we do. Getting into the budgets, everything's the same. I do want to remind you guys again this year, I received a grant for one-third reimbursement of our salaries. So we receive that right back into the general fund every year. It's a grant that I applied for and received. Last year, I even received more than what we originally should have. And then the rest of the budget, I haven't increased anything except for in July, I came to you guys for the purchase of a new lease for a vehicle that you guys did an additional, the only additional preparation I asked for this year for that. And so I included that in this year's budget, next year's budget, I guess.
Any questions or comments?
All right, come on, she might give her questions. She was right.
Excuse me, there?
When I came in?
I was.
I know, I just put my question to these types of concerned on the vehicle. Is the old vehicle done for basically or?
Yeah, so the commissioners have not decided to sign the contract yet, although you guys had decided to fund it. They have not decided to sign the contract yet. They wanted me to look at other options of possibly just getting the truck fixed. I don't have any funding in line item to have repairs done to a vehicle, let alone have the diagnostics done. So we had planned, we had talked about using the funding that you guys did need a stronger ratio for to have some diagnostics done to it. We're looking at different places to have that done at. The first couple that I got votes for, the commissioners thought that that was too expensive. So we've looked at other options just to see what it would cost.
Too expensive for you and too expensive to fix the old.
So we're estimating, just by our novice, you know, looking things up, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to fix it. So that's not for a professional installist that.
Any other questions?
So two thousand and fourteen.
It's the pickup truck, right?
Correct, which is what we use to pull all of our trailers. It has a really bad knock. You put it in reverse and it, you know, goes really hard into reverse. It's on its last legs. It's got a busted windshield.
A little duct tape and WD-40 can fix. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonno.
I'm Mark Bonno. I'm the County Building and Zoning Administrator. The Building Department oversees and enforces all your land use ordinances, including building ordinances, flood plan ordinances, zoning code, businesses rather than all, or you with all of it. Also oversee maintenance for the civilian buildings, which is the courthouse, the top of the building center and the government center. Total employees are six and three, well, two and a half meetings. You guys have two full-time and one part-time. Take care of maintenance along with myself. And then in the Building Department, there's three people as well. Any questions about that? If you have any answers, as far as the budget goes, the Building Department and Maintenance Department is all appropriated into one section of your code book. I have about a one percent increase from last year. Operations haven't gone down, so I have to keep those op monies up for elevators, bug, spraying, a little bit of everything, maintenance. So that's where most of the one percent is. Obviously, salaries are all three percent. So the last year's, last year's budget was five hundred and thirteen, three sixty, and twenty-twenty-six is five fifteen, six fifty. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think I have the Building Department code books. Why that's such a big jump from, what was it, five hundred to fourteen fifty?
Yes, code adoption. Well, the state of the union is always behind in code adoption. Like, we are still an international building code, the two thousand and twelve. So once they get forward to two thousand and twenty-five, we'll have to buy those new code books.
You know, last year, this year, working on probation building, any other improvements?
Probation actually wrapped up. I think the last paint was done.
Last week, maybe early this, yeah, this last week. So that is actually done, substantial completion. We should have that substantial completion this week yet. And then, of course, the courthouse.
Is it still on track?
It's about two weeks behind in general. On the interior, it is where the two weeks are. Exterior-wise, it's really kind of hard to say if we're two weeks or a month. Because, you know, with all the repairs that we did to the exterior up high on the cornice and at top, like we'll say, there's a lot of unknowns that we found up there. We opened that up. So that's probably another two weeks there as far as scheduling. And I know the scaffolding has been a topic of conversation. I think it's going to start coming down about the middle of September, so. But we're still waiting on the cornice minute we get here, so it did not show up today. But interior-wise, they're about two weeks behind. And they did start phase three this week. Phase three is third floor, jury room and attorney-client and then bathrooms, which is on the lower side of the third floor. And second floor in phase three is the prosecutor's area, so we remodeled the old clerk area on the second floor and got that to completion. And now the prosecutors are all moving into those spaces and emptying their rooms out so we can move all the furniture out and start that remodel. So within, by the end of the week, we'll have everything cleared out on the second floor. We're fully contracted to have. But it's slowed up a little bit right now because the elevator is out of service. We did have about a four thousand dollar part go out on the elevator last week. And we're still, that part was supposed to be in today and then hopefully they can install that tomorrow. So the courthouse does not have an elevator until the Secretary gets back with that part, which we're hoping will be tomorrow or Wednesday. So that has centered us a little bit on the interior more as well.
I'm not sure if it's the word or if it's not the word or else.
No, but Dimitri was the one that was stuck in the elevator.
Any questions, Mark? Thank you. All right, Jake.
Good afternoon, Jake, local highway director. So yeah, the highway department were responsible for maintaining the road and the right-of-way without actual obstacles or picking up here, cutting trees on eight hundred miles of roadway, five hundred, three hundred of gravel. As far as our budget goes, local road street, we did decrease it by fifty thousand. This won't be the last time we draw down fund balance. I know Mindy had brought up her concerns on fund balance last time during your meeting. This should be the last time a primary keeps coming in the way it should. This should be the last year we draw down fund balance. Restricted, eleven seventy-three N B H restricted. I did raise by two minutes by a hundred and eighty thousand, but this is still under feeder plan. The reason it is under feeder plan is because we did salary adjustments out of the unrestricted and to the restricted. So we didn't want to double budget for the salaries on those. And then N B H eleven seventy-six, obviously, this is the one that took the biggest hit this year for increase. It's up six hundred and eighty-seven thousand. That was three percent for the raises. Commercial insurance and workers' comp went up twenty percent. And the four hundred thousand dollar increase that we are hoping to get for the revenue of the impacts. So that's where those, that big jump is from. You guys have any questions on this? I don't know. I was looking at the budget book. It says, it's all bonky, it has fourteen percent, forty-nine percent differences on salaries. It was all three percent. I don't know. Is that an adjustments? Salary adjustments between the N B H. So to explain that a little more, every day we fill out a code, and it basically tells us what funds we can pay out of. If it's a restricted job, which is a construction, reconstruction, or preservation job, we can pay out of the restricted fund. If it's anything else, it has to come out of NPH regular. That's per state statute. So that's why that's a little wonky.
Are you a full-up on staff, or?
I'm three short.
Three short.
Was born, just hired a guy. He just hired a couple of years ago. Cuban Bridge, eleven thirty-five. Again, this is under feeder's plan. Obviously, commissioners ask you guys about the rate every year. We kind of go back and forth. The reason this is lower than the feeder's plan is we have three federal aid projects that are all going to lead at the same time. So we have to write a twenty percent of the construction costs upfront to the state of Indiana. Plus, New Core, as you guys know, with the intersection improvement. And then I have another major, six and a half million dollar project coming up, so I'll have to write another twenty percent. So that's why I'm not drawing that fund balance down as quick, is because I've got quite a bit of checks going out next year. Do you have any questions?
Now, New Core Bridge, RDC.
So they did engineering and right-of-way. We still have construction, and we have a construction inspection still left to do. So we're looking at twenty-one million. We had a phone call today talking about bonding, that kind of thing. We're just kind of holding tight on spending that just in case there's a mess-up. Because we have a very short timeframe we have to hit perfect going forward.
But also, the RDC, is it going to pick up?
Yes, Tom, fine, can you insert? The plan would be to have a bond to pay for, but the construction inspection, as well as some other work, we have to pay upfront. So we're looking at possibly using Cuban Bridge for some of that.
That's a fair statement.
We have to, once the, I don't know if you explained this, when the state awards the bid, possibly next July, we have sixty days to provide our match.
Our twenty percent, or greater, depends on how those bids come in. And that's with every federal aid project. If it goes above our estimate, we're on the hook for that. So that's why I've not spent down my Cuban Bridge. And I like, I like keeping a million dollars in there. Bridge fails, you know, we need, the small bridge is one point three million nowadays. And we've got several big bridges that a million will get us started. And we're not just sitting there. I don't know if you guys remember, but Big County had the tractor head to Iron Bridge. It took almost three years because they didn't run the funds. I don't want to be caught in that.
It's kind of like a rainy day. It's a, it's an insurance policy. When you see that, you've got to realize that you've got a little over years to get that money there.
Right.
He's right. The state can W you for months, but they want their money in sixty days. So you just have to remember that.
So I think I'm open there.
Counsel can do during this process is look at some ways to come up with some additional money for you, some funding. And so you got the resources, the people, get it done, if we come up with extra funds. I don't think, did you talk about your bug plant in here at all?
Just when I did the ideal financial plan, but not, not in this, no. We've had a couple other pieces of equipment that's.
Failed. We're trying to get those fixed, trying to replace them when we can. Yeah. Bug mill's running. I actually had several people come visit my bug mill, just because my bug's working and they wanted to know why. So I'm not saying.
I don't need a new one, but it kind of made me feel good when they're coming to visit a nineteen sixty-five dinosaur and they're running a twenty-twenty-three, asking me questions. So it's just prioritizing, right? The things that we need, we need now. Bug mill runs four months out of the year. Do I need it? Yeah. But it's just a matter of prioritizing right now.
And Jake and I spoke with Jeff Peters about doing an analysis on how to fund to his ideal plan. And he had suggested, get through the budget process, then after that, we'll start working on some, if it's sustainable, and what we can do.
Yeah, I think that's the other thing. Let's see how legislation plays out, and then go from there. You know, obviously, I think Peters had predicted four hundred twenty-five thousand for the wheel tax. Only budget is four hundred thousand, just to be conservative. But if it comes in more or less, if we get more people moving here, hopefully that moves out too. So, yeah, no, I appreciate it. I know, I've talked to Commissioner Guard. A lot of it has to do with the way the state dictates their funding. Did an interview on radio a couple of weeks ago. As a, as a Cusier, as a Montgomery County resident, you spend five hundred dollars on wheel tax, I get seventy-seven cents of it. That's it. Stays here. So, you know, I think that's something that needs to be addressed, not from you guys, but from the state.
So the state gets the balance?
They get sixty-two percent, thirty-eight percent. It's divided between all the other cities, towns, and counties.
Jake, did you say wheel tax or gas tax?
Gas tax.
You know.
Yeah, I'm talking to you. Gas tax. I think that's something that people need to know. Eighteen cents of your gas tax is a federal project right off the top. I get less than a dollar of your gas tax for here. And I think that's even more crucial of why the wheel tax is such beneficial, because a hundred percent of it stays local.
Every time they raise fuel tax a penny or two.
End dot takes their money and everybody takes it. Tom Mark had the best deal with beans. You get, you get a big jar of bean.
They still have that.
Okay, and you would think how many beans we would, and they'd say, Montgomery County, oh, here's your four beans, or four beans. And then just there to do this big jar. There'd be a. Jar left, and then they'd take end dots out of there, and they just, you know, they take their money and then off the top. And that's why it never comes back to us. But it's a, it's something to see, because it really, you really realize what goes away and doesn't come back. Where like he's saying, the wheel tax stays here.
Next on the list is engineering. We had gotten rid of the engineering budget lines prior to twenty-five, but I had to encumber some money. So that's why it stayed. But we have done away with the engineering department. Tom and I has taken over those responsibilities and dispersed those. And it made it super difficult to transfer.
Do other things in the budget, but you have two different departments in one budget. So that's, that's no longer. So I just want to address that while it's on the agenda.
Appreciate what you're doing with what you got. And like I said, we're trying to figure this out, but you guys are doing a good job. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Waits and measures. Doesn't look like we have anybody here for that. Oh, okay. Lori's up then.
I'm doing waiting for the first, yes, and the rest of them. Lori Dawson, she's a executive assistant. With the wait's a measure, but it's remained the same, only the changes, the salary increase to three percent that was recommended. Any questions on them?
I have a question.
Yes.
Hello.
On this travel expenses. Does he have to go up there more?
That's travel. He, our wait and measures guy is actually the, Tiberia County's also. We give him on Fridays. So his travel is, he's going around to the different places when he comes down once a, once a week. He do those, and that's what he says he goes through a year. He uses his own vehicle also. We don't, we don't rely on the other. We get an excellent deal with him. Knock on wood, he's no complaints. So very happy with him. We've had him for several years now. His name's Jim Wolf.
Thank you.
Ready for the commissioners? The commissioners, they're the, they are the executive legislative body of the Gump County Government. We have five employees in our office. We have the three full-time commissioners, and Mr. Klein and myself. The Cusiers appointed county administrator, executive assistant, director of building and zoning, no more county, Virginia. Emergency management agency director, highway director, mapping director, waits and measures inspector, and their service officers. They also do a lot of permits to the boards and commissioners for the county. First of all, this is the commissioner's budget. It's pretty much basically the same. We didn't have sudden increases as far as group insurance went up a little bit. We're kind of getting that figured out and making sure we get everything, everything in ours. We have enough to cover what we pay for the premiums. And then we also have our self-insurance fund. There is an increase on the HSA. If you remember, that we offer seven fifty to each employee for their house savings account. And then if they go through a screening, they get an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars. So the amount that we put in there is for if everyone does that. And this is kind of our first year for the extra seven fifty. So we're kind of seeing where we're at, but not, my understanding, really not everybody's taking advantage of it, unfortunately. So workers' comp, that was an, that was an increase. Yeah, contractual services, that's a big jump. And there we have, we covered the four H rent, that once a year. And then also, we put in five hundred thousand for the CCNG, which is the community crossings grant. Jeff Peter recommended to put in county general, so we put it in the commissioner's budget. And then also, we added a fifty thousand dollars for, we're going to try to do a property cleanup, kind of start a program to where, just to give you know, we've got to start somewhere. Just to kind of see what we could get done. The early learning center, that was from last year. The, the insurance, that was a twenty percent increase for commercial insurance. The rest of it's basically the same. So our big jump was the contractual services.
This property cleanup, thirty thousand dollars this way, what, what do you got, the freshers got planned? They've shared that with you, the higher companies to.
Well, we're kind of toying, we're getting, trying to get some ideas. We talked about possibly maybe even providing someone a dumpster. Saying, hey, if we pay for your dumpster, you fill it up, it'll all go away. Maybe they're just, they can't, can't afford something like that, just to kind of, to help out, just start low, low scale, low key to start out. We need to start a list of properties and kind of put them in order to see how, what kind of funds we're talking about. Yeah, it's, it is, we get, not, we do get calls, and they're concerned from citizens of other neighbors, somebody down the road. And they feel, you know, they kind of feel like there's, we're not helping them. We just say, well, there's nothing we can do. So we thought, that's something we'd like to try, if it's, if it's possible with funding.
Would this just be county properties, since the city does their own?
Yeah, this were, yeah, we only, we only have jurisdiction in the unincorporated areas. So it's not the towns, it's not property, it's just people living in the country. Our next one is the IT budget. The IT budget, kind of, it more reflects on what we're spending as far as the IT budget. That is, you know, that's the budget for the entire county. That's ninety-six sixteen, that should be next, and we are both. So that is all of our security, cybersecurity, our firewall, all of our, all of our county systems. So this is a, this is a very important budget, I think. Well, they're all, but this is mine, so I feel excited. So the, we pay for the loud software, we pay for the PBD software. And we also, we put in sixty thousand for computers. And what we do is we try to replace, like, we try to move around a five-year cycle to replace computers for all the departments. And we kind of have to get back on that. I did work out this budget. I spoke to our IT facility, it was just edge IT. And these are subscription renewals that we need to do for Barracuda and for Cisco. And some of those, they don't run annually. They'll run like from a May to a May or something like that. So sometimes we can split those out. But these are what the annual costs are. And the next one down is the self-insurance. And that's, we worked that out with the auditor and figured out what we need to put in there. And that's always a good time. Stormwater reviews, those are for Mark Bonwell. He takes care of stormwater. So he doesn't, this is under the commissioners. And this is for the engineering firms that will go over. He has a banning engineering, it's the engineering firm that we use, for reviews for the different projects that Mark has, where they need to be. So that's what pays for those. The next one is the CCD budget, Human Capital Development Budget. And we did drop that this year. We don't have really any big projects going on as far as, like, we have Parkway last year and those kind of things. So we kind of dropped that down a little bit. The sheriff's vehicles, those are for Ryans cars. And then the rest of us are more for maintenance. And then we do some work that we'll be doing on the landfill also. The next one is just the bond payment for the bridge note. And the next one, then the one after that, is the government center. Now, innkeepers, they have not, they've met, and they're supposed to approve their actual budget that we submitted. So in lieu of time, we submitted the budget that they did last year. So if there's any kind of an increase, my care on that. If there's any kind of an increase, I want to come out from this and go provision for that. Down, down to Riverboat, that's the same as last year. And then after that was the eleven fifty-one, is Mercy Medical Services. And that is per our agreement with the City of Propertyville. And that amount goes up every year, just in small increments. And we also have.
Have you been happy with this, you know, Senate Bill One and different things going on? Have you heard any crystal ball stuff?
They're also concerned, the city is also concerned about Senate Bill One, but not as far as keeping those services going. You know, I heard anything that they're going to pull that out. Now, this is, it's a five-year agreement. So after that.
What's the annual revenue from Riverboat?
It's a hundred and a half.
Hundred and a half.
Ninety-eight.
I was going to say eighty-eight, but yeah.
Ninety-eight. Used to, they would give it to us all in one payment, but now they have to break it out.
So we're going to spend over a hundred and ten percent of annual revenue.
Also, under us is the RDC budgets. Do you have that? Okay. Let's see, the local program grant, that's a grant that the RDC has, they use that line item for the CDC. And there, I did speak to the president of the CDC, and he doesn't anticipate spending any money this year. He said possibly not. But he asked if we could put money in for next year, just in case. He said possibly not, that he asked if we could put it in for next year, just in case something comes up. And then, then the next one down is the RDC, the non-TIP money that the RDC has requested. That's $500,000 for them to use for something residential comes up. Mr. Ruth is on that, if you want to, do you have any questions on that one? Gary, we're at 4850, RDC. Okay.
I don't know, is there a question?
Oh, no, just if they had, if you had any questions, I can ask them, have them ask you the 500,000.
Well, RDC can only spend money in the TIF district unless it's put in by the council to be able to spend outside. The function of the RDC is to find or look for places for growth opportunity, for, for building opportunity and start that, or see what it takes to, see what it takes to make that happen. So that's the reason for it. Like we asked, spent some money out of Rain Town, because they were wanting to see what could be done. They usually even know how to do it. And we paid for the, what was done in their engineering, I think that was $30,000.
Something like that.
Things like that. And that's, that money is, we can't use TIF district money for that, because it's outside the TIF district.
Also the Skank Road study, we stepped up for the Skank Road, too.
Right. We get, we got money from the council to do all that out there, the bypass number that we signed.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, then the next one is the temper ceiling, that's the bond payment that we have to pay. And then down from that is the, the RDC, the New Core, that's the TIF general, that's their operating budget. They did reduce that. They just have the 225,000 for contractual services and the bond payment. So they're kind of going to be just operating for next year.
I might add on that.
Temper Sealy, the way they tax, they, they, they were paying their taxes from the junk on a low-interest bond, interest money. And so they're, they're paying full tax, property tax for junk. And if I believe I'm speaking right, Tom, that New Core got some tax deferral because of the new law, but they agreed to pick up anything that they were, when they dropped in, they agreed to add back to their tax revenue to pay their, their fee. Is that right?
Yes, actually, the, so New Core will have a tax abatement, but they'll also have an agreement that says if they, if some reason they are not, because of taxes, that they did not pay what we need to do the bond for the New Core overspass project, they'll, they'll make up the difference, and there's a cap for them to pay us. So we're working on finalizing that agreement right now.
And Mindy Brett Cating, wasn't temper, isn't, aren't they behind a little bit on what they've been paying, and, but we've got the money to pay it, and they'll make it up later in that TIF district? Is that right?
They're not behind on, on anything.
But I just meant on the amounts coming in, something like that.
I think what's behind is the, the amount of tax revenue that they've been charged because of how they grew where they started off. They got a slow start.
Okay, I just remember them talking about, you guys talking about.
That reduced the amount of tax revenues that's been assessed. I think they were going to help with that, too.
Yeah, they've been working closely with the assessor and, yeah, they're, it, like Gary said, they're just getting a slow start, but there's a deficient, they have a agreement with the county that if they didn't raise enough in the TIF district, that they would cover the difference in the deficiency payment, so.
Yeah, it's nice to have, New Core's always been a good neighbor, and it seems like Temper Sealy is going to be a real good neighbor as well.
Yep, absolutely.
And the last one that we have is the solid waste management district. We did increase that budget. We added another recycling center, and we do have a new environmental company that we use for the tox away day. And there's a chance that that could increase as far as our cost. It did not increase this year, so as I anticipated, because we were down a little bit in our numbers, there were 320.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, 350 or something.
Yes, right. 350 threshold, we get charged $30 per car after that. And last year we had 500, so just in case, so that, that probably the amount will not be used. That's how I have it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
So we got through that in less than two, less than the two hours, which is a pretty good record. Tomorrow night, we have the next set of budget hearings, same time, same place.
And. Next week, I mean, it's September 9th, Friday night. And.
That's wrong with the bottom, where it should be, it should be four.
Oh, yes. Four to 6:00. Come on. With that, I want to tell you a story. Right?